So we're going to call a meeting to order. At this moment, we have, to my far right, Troy Lawson, Veronica Devonese, to my far left, Richard Simpel, and myself, Jim Acabachi. I'll be acting chair this evening. Absent will be Naziel Kalasi. He may sign in on Zoom, he may not. It's 1:00 in the morning where he is in the world right now. So if he's up and able to, he'll sign on for ability to be a voting member of any continued meetings that are open this evening. First order of business. Well, that was at exactly 6:30. First order of business is to approve meeting minutes from 9/27/23. I have reviewed them. I found one little error that I can't correct in initial. Any comments on the minutes?
Nope.
You have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Troy Lawson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's moved by Troy, seconded by Veronica. All in favor say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved and signed. Moving right on to approved. Bear with me, I got to make notes too. Even though we have somebody here doing it, we cross-check. Moving right on, continued public hearings. Up first at bat, 3123 Warren, 176 Main Street. Are you here alone?
No.
Okay. Okay. And I've been informed I don't even need to dig into the whole file because you have new. I saw some emails, things that came around today, so if you want to just come on up and hand them. You know how formal we are here. You don't have to ask permission. Good evening, thank you. Thank you, sir. So I think there was a peer review that came through today on this, too.
Yes, on behalf of...
Can I help? Yeah, I'll take it. We'll take it.
So while Mr. Madden is handing that out, I'm Jillian Warren of 184 Main Street. The attorney representing the applicant on this project, Phil Warren, met him last time we were here. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, you did vote on approving the variance for landscape buffer, but we were at a position where we were waiting for the peer review, the second peer review. And so we did receive that yesterday evening, and Mr. Madden was able to turn around and get comments to you now. And I think so it's more technical. I would say that he should take the ball from here. But if you recall, this is a retrocade site, 176 Main Street, right next to my building. And so we can go through, if you want, Bill, the comments and the nuances in our response.
So do you guys? This just came through email, I think, today. So we're looking at, we're kind of all seeing it together for the first time. Mr. Madden, do you want to talk about this?
I can talk briefly about it. I think that...
Just, you know, Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. Go ahead. Yeah, that's okay.
Engineer here on behalf of...
Please make sure he's making his own mic, Mr. Madden.
What is it? What is it, Noah?
He's got it.
Please make sure he's on...
Oh, your mic's off. Okay.
It's on, right?
Everything you say may and will be held against you.
I think that as far as the review letter goes, most of the items were disposed of at the last meeting. There were still some comments that the review consultant had on drainage. But I think that I can explain what the situation is with the drainage. It's not that critical.
So what I've got here is their comments with your replies, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So item number one, that was with the floodplain overly district. They asked us to add that to the cover sheet, which we added to the cover sheet. The floodplain overly district has been added. Item number two was disposed of, so there's no reply or comment for number two. Item number three relates to the Article VII of the design standards of the Wyram Village District. I think that we were maintaining the position that we didn't necessarily need to comply with that, but we provided you with an architectural drawing and elevation of the buildings on the sides and what have you at the last meeting.
We've seen them, yep.
At the last meeting. And we don't believe there's any... Provided that it's satisfactory to you, we think that we've satisfied their concern with item number three. Item number four was the issue with some of the landscaping. You might recall at the last meeting, you granted the landscape waiver.
We did.
For us, but you also asked us to include...
Put some shrubs or something up there.
Trubs in the back.
Screen that neighbor. Which page is that?
Sheet six of eight.
Sheet six. Sheet six. Oh, you put a bunch of them up there.
That's a sound wall if I've ever seen one.
Yeah, we put a double row of... Our provide is staggered, double row staggered. We think that's really the appropriate way to get it covered or to provide a decent screen. You can see the light, there's a lighter shaded tree. There's a couple of trees that exist up there. So we tried to make our landscaping around that integrated.
You're going to cut trees down to plant trees.
Correct.
And I will add, if you've been by the property, there's been quite a bit of landscape that I know that you wanted to see. Those rhododendrons are gone if you've gone by there.
I went by today just for this reason.
Yeah, so you see there's giant, and it actually looks pretty cool, the fact that I hadn't seen that. So even just the trimming of the bushes on the front, too, right where Main Street is, you can see it coming together. And once we add these other plants, it'll really be something special.
Right, so we did show some landscaping on the front and the sides. And we pulled, I don't know, 10 or so feet down the sideline of that rear property line. So just to, you know, further enhance that landscape screen. Item number six was this area that we just cross-hatched in the existing paper.
Six, I don't think even isn't on your response letter here.
Yes, five, six, and seven, I think we're missing.
We were all the way up to eight.
Oh, okay, well, I think that we, that's page three. That's correct. What we did is we excluded the items in the original letters that had been...
Things that we've already dealt with aren't here.
Right, they're not here.
So we're jumping to eight.
So number eight. So we had originally shown a portion of the parking lot to be basically painted and striped as opposed to any other treatment. And our intention would be to use that for a snow storage area and what have you. And I guess the review consultant just leaves that up to the board to...
I read his comment. He's leaving it up to us.
Okay. Under item number nine, they had some comments on the test pits that we excavated on the site and the terminology that we used on our plan. And on our plan, we indicated where the mottling was. But if you look on that sheet, number two, there's test pits that are shown there.
The detail on sheet number two?
What's that?
Is it the detail sheet two? It's nothing but...
No, it's the test pit data right here on sheet number two.
Okay, I see it now, yep.
And there's a note in there that says "models at 70 inches, no water encountered." That was interpreted as a perched water table by the review consultants. It's not a perched water table. It's a textural change in the soil. So we go from a more coarse material just above that 70 elevation to a tighter, siltier material below that 70 elevation. So when water infiltrates into the ground, it's delayed at that textural change. And you'll get a feature in that soil that's called mottling. It's like orange and brown spots in the soil. And many times, it's attributable to a seasonal water table. But in this case, it isn't. There was, it isn't associated with the seasonal water table. What we did is I went back, we went into the building. The basement level is lower than where we excavated. There's a sump pit in that basement level. There's no liquid in there, there's no water in it. You know, just further evidence of your soil evaluator. These are some of the things that they have.
You'd be getting hydraulic pressure up into the base of it if it was there.
It would. And, you know, just from our little local knowledge that we have, if we go down to 59 Main Street, the water table down there is at .5 feet on the datum that we use. So we don't think that it's anywhere near elevation 5.7. And, you know, that's what we noted in it. Tried to talk to Phil today, wasn't able to get in touch with him this afternoon. But what we tried to demonstrate to the board here is that, you know, there is evidence in the field that points to the fact that the water table is not at that elevated level.
It's not a half a foot, it's not six inches below the surface.
No.
That's .5 feet, right?
Well, elevation, it's elevation .5. So zero being, let's call it mean sea level, six inches above that at 59 Main Street. When we come up here, the basement level of the building and the bottom of the sump pit is like at elevation 3, 3.3. So there's no water at 3.3. You know, there's not going to be water at 5.65, which is that elevation 70. And we would maintain that that does not reflect the water table, doesn't reflect the water table. It's a textural change in the soil that causes that mottling through infiltration to occur. So that's what we've answered there. And, you know, what we, since it's a C-class soil, you know, A being the best, D being the worst, C is just really fair at best. You know, the infiltration rate that we are to use by the Stormwater Management Handbook is .27 inches an hour of infiltration, which is, it's not a lot. And I would maintain that it probably does, the site does a little better than that infiltration rate. And I would evidence that by the rainfall that we received just in this month alone. We've had some pretty significant rainfalls throughout the entire summer, throughout the fall, and even as recent as last week. Couple inch rainfalls, you know, in that order magnitude. And we see no ponding, puddling, or anything going on there. So seems like the site reacts a little bit differently than what the book might tell you it would, how it would act. So we're comfortable with these elevations and don't believe it's a seasonal water table elevation.
Before we move on to 10, I'm just looking to my left and right. You guys...
Yeah, if anybody has a question on it. No, okay.
I just don't want to, I don't want to hold this project up, you know, waiting to go back and forth between engineers. If there's any questions on this, let's get them out now.
Yeah, and will Phil be coming? Will Phil end up having a chance to ask any questions?
Is Phil even here?
Somebody's saying from that.
I know, he always hides behind that easel, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, I put it there.
What's that going to happen to disappear?
Okay, Phil. So while we're here, let's just ask Phil to come up and see if, you know...
Sure.
I get what you're saying, I get what he said. So do you guys kind of agree that you... Did you hear his response?
I did. For the record, Phil Cordaro from Allen &amp; Major Associates. We did have a chance to review the materials before the hearing tonight, so we can weigh in on it for you to be able to render a decision to not hold anything up. I agree with Mr. Madden's position. I understand where he's coming from. There was some unfortunate language on the terminology that's on the plans regarding the use of mottling, which can be interpreted as high water table. He's provided some additional supplemental data that helps refine it. My suggestion, if the board is inclined to issue an order tonight or issue site plan approval tonight for the application, is to note in there that as part of the construction, we would want to confirm that water table to make sure that it is as Mr. Madden supposes it to be. We're not suggesting that he's wrong in any way. But when it opens up for the construction of that leaching field, we would confirm that the redox is as he just has to.
See, yeah, you get one of these guys that likes to look at dirt and has a piece of paper that says he can.
We love it. We love it, yes.
Yep. And, you know, if that is the wish of the board, we would have no objections.
You have no problem with that?
They're going to hold that's 10 feet deep out there anyway, so too.
They have to open it to install the drainage that's on anyways. It has to be reviewed before the drainage goes in. So they're going to do it anyways. I guess I'm suggesting to the board, we're just going to put eyes on it, make sure it aligns with the plans, and...
And I see you're making some notes.
For the chair. So you said at construction?
My recommendation would be at construction to the board, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We're all good?
We're all good.
Phil, if you don't mind, just stay up here. I'm going to let him go. I'm sorry to stop you, but I just didn't want to get hung up later if it's all fresh in our mind. Now, we're jumping to 10, go ahead.
That's fine, no objection on our side at all. Item number 10, we talked about that seasonal water table. And if it's, if we're less than four feet above the water table with our leaching facility, we're required to do mounding calculations. You know, if we dug a test pit that was 12 feet deep as opposed to seven feet deep in that location, we'd probably be able to conclusively state to you what the situation is. But we did do the mounding calculations. And what that means is that when we introduce the water into our leaching field or pits, it's going to artificially elevate the water table temporarily. So based on the size, the rectangular nature of the leaching field itself, the depth of water table, the soil, the hydraulic characteristics of the soil, we calculated it using a standard procedure to be .93 feet of groundwater rise, regardless of where it is in the field. So what we're saying there, the bottom of our leaching, when water is introduced to that rainwater, that it'll temporarily raise the groundwater .93.
About a foot.
About a foot. So it doesn't, it goes into our storage capacity to some degree, not tremendously affected.
And, Mr. Chair, we agree with the calculation. Just to check the box technically.
Cool. Cool. So now we're going to 12.
On item number 12, yeah, basically what we were saying there is that that area that we would have to modify is so small that your calculations will not change. You know, it's a couple of hundred square feet that we're talking about. And when we add that 200 square feet to the 2,000 or 3,000 square feet of that drainage area, you know, it does not change the drainage calculations. So that was the point, that was the point of our comment there. And what we also, what we also bring up is that during the 100-year storm, we calculate the elevation of the water to be, well, it was calculated to be at 12.9, 12.9, I believe. And there was, the thought was that it might flow into the back door of the building because that threshold is at 12.7, I think, is what it is. We don't see that being the case for two reasons. On one portion of the site, the highest point where the parking lot comes around to the back is 12.3. So we can't get above 12.3 without it running down the driveway and into Main Street. And then there's another feature that we add...
Main Street has to fill up with water almost enough to float a boat before you're going to have this problem. Am I hearing you right?
I think that we could get drainage and runoff under other storm events running down into Main Street. That's pretty much what it is. But it's not going to flow into the back door of the building.
Okay.
And the other thing was is that we employ these devices on our drainage systems called drainage emitters. We put an overflow on the top of our drainage basins, and we show it on our plan. We run it down the side of the building, the south side of the lot. And these are called pop-up emitters. So when the water fills up that basin, the emitter will pop up and it'll discharge water at the surface of the ground. And where it's located on our side, it's on the south end of the site, adjacent to the parking lot. That runoff would enter into the stormwater or the stone trench that's along the front of the yard. So there's a couple of things that were integrated in the project that don't allow it to be a bowl. We have a couple of outlets, and those are the two things that we had that would keep the water lower than the building threshold elevation.
To weigh in, to echo Mr. Madden's point. So our initial concern, and we still do have it to some degree, but I think we can collectively work through it, is the model that was assembled and provided with the site plan review application materials provided the numbers that we raised initially, saying the water is going to get to elevation 12.7, the door is at elevation 12.5. There's a disconnect somewhere. We agree with everything Mr. Madden said regarding the weir, regarding the emitters, regarding the water flowing towards Main Street in those higher events. But their data model simply says it's going to get to 12.7, even with all of those elements in place. So our concern to raise for the board, for the applicant, to Mr. Madden, is there is the chance that that back parking lot is underwater during certain storm events. And not necessarily the very large 100-year events, but really in the everyday events, even with this new additional drainage in place. He's supported his calculations with additional data, his empirical reviews of sites adjacent, his professional knowledge that the site is likely to drain better than even the calculation support. That is a real thing, that does happen. And we can confirm that once the drain field is open and everybody puts eyes on it and goes, yes, this soil is likely to perform better than his calculations indicate. So I think from a technical perspective, we can get beyond our initial comment. We can agree with Mr. Madden's ultimate statement regarding how he believes the system will function. But I think it's important that we just remain on record that the board is made aware that if the system does pond back here, it is an effect to the tenant, to the occupant, Mr. Warren, who may not have use of the rear of the property. And it's just something that we're noting. They don't believe it's going to happen. We hope it doesn't happen also. But the calculations did, in fact, say otherwise, and that was the basis of our comment.
Got you. Got you. So if they're really worried, they could buy some rubber glosses.
They're going to be carrying people into the building for the few inches of water that's out there. My, Mr. Chair and members of the board, my real concern is not that there's a puddle in the parking lot, that happens. My concern is that there are ADA spaces at the rear of the site, and those are the only location for ADA spaces. And we should...
So that's where the, the wheelchairs are going to go back there?
Yes. And we would want that to be dry for them.
Yeah, I got you.
At the absolute minimum.
And so how's our grading there? I mean, would it have a tendency to flow away from that spot anyway, just by the way it's graded?
Yes, it's to flow away from that. Do you want me to just flip to the...
No, no, I got it, I got it. I get, we just want to know that if we had a real, real, real heavy rainstorm and that there might be a puddle.
The grade is from that back. The high point in that rear parking area is where the handicap parking is. The lowest area is by the driveway, by Jillian's office, Jillian's office building. So there is slight slope across there, about a half a foot, something along those lines. And also, the parking lot itself that we've, that we're building, it's going to be constructed with crushed stone as opposed to gravel or asphalt, you know, with the exception of the handicap space.
It's going to take it better.
So we're going to have, we're going to have the ability to store some volume in that stone there. And I don't know if the drainage calc's really... I don't know, what do you think, Phil? Do they really take, you know, the character of crushed stone versus gravel, you know?
Mr. Madden's correct. You know, we're trying to force a theoretical model. The real-world conditions will drive the bus a little bit differently. Do they factor in the crushed stone? Not entirely. Things perform differently. It's a double-edged sword. The crushed stone is a benefit to them in that the water's going to go through it, and it makes everything better. It's also a double-edged sword in that the crushed stones get filled with sediment, sand, debris, salts, whatever, and ultimately clogs over time. So there is some diminishing returns. It becomes part of a maintenance obligation for the occupant of the building. I think at this point, regarding that ponding, regarding the responses that they've provided, they've satisfied our concerns. We just want to make you, the board, aware of, you know, what's at stake if something didn't work.
Let's move on.
I just want, need a little bit of clarification on that, just for the record. So we want a confirmation of the water table. And this would be a confirmation of the drainage calc's. So these two different things, or is it the same?
Two different things, yeah. We already, that was, we were going back. You want to answer her?
They are two different things. So there's the confirmation of the soils as contained in the drainage calc's, and the confirmation of the drainage calc's has already been done.
Okay, thank you.
I'll sit.
Thank you.
I think we're on to 14.
Yep, item number 14. Oh, we're talking about the drawdown time due to the soils.
Is this more of the same?
Yes.
Okay. So we've kind of had this conversation. We've kind, yeah.
Mr. Chair, 14 and 16 are really...
Yeah, okay.
We've just touched on them.
We're kind of, everybody's kind of warm and fuzzy now, I think. Okay. As long as you're nodding, I'm going to keep pushing them along. I don't want to, you know, but if...
Going. Going.
You gotta consider, yeah, okay. So, let's get to 16.
Well, 16, Mr. Chair, sorry, I interrupted, is, is really all tied together as well.
Then, let's, let's, um...
Because of provisions to the drainage.
Oh, my God, we're at the signature.
You're, you're good.
I like those words.
You can read it if you want.
No, no, I see the signature, I see the smiling faces, I don't see you going, you know, so...
I'd interrupt.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Board?
I have nothing.
Are you done?
Yes.
No comment?
No comment.
Community? Yeah, for or against this project? Any comments on everything we've been talking about? Any reason to belabor this thing?
I don't see any.
I don't see any reasons to belabor it. I think, generally speaking, it seems to me that it's a project that a lot of people have good feelings on, and we should probably make some kind of motions, like maybe to close the public portion of the meeting and maybe move on to a vote.
I make a motion to close this portion of the public meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public portion of this meeting. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It's unanimous. We're closed. Nobody can speak now but us. We feel all powerful. Any comments?
So, where are we at? We've approved the variance already?
The variance we voted on, we just wanted to look at the site plan, we wanted to look at the peer review.
And...
We've kinda satisfied ourselves. I would say we're ready to make a motion to approve as presented, based on the updated plans. And is there a date on here? Is this?
Today's date.
10/11/23?
Revised through 10/11/23.
Revised through 10/11/23.
With the condition that there's confirmation of the water table during construction and that the drainage calcs confirmed guests.
Is that a motion?
I was finishing what I thought I heard as a motion.
So, so Veronica's moved that we approve with those conditions. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. You're done.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
We appreciate your efforts and your work. We appreciate your peer review. Thank you all.
Did you get this? One, no.
No, thank you.
Good. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Richard. James, yes. Well, Richard, I'd be proud of you. See how quick it goes.
He's just gonna hand me another one anyway.
Yeah.
If we have that kind of water, I think your front, your desk will be out in Main Street anyway, right? You'll call him and let him know that it's flooding.
I think we're looking at 38-23. I need to read this. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 11th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 38-23 for two variances from the requirements of Article 6 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Forest Divine of 129 Lover's Lane, Greenville, Mass. Care of Jillian Morton Esquire of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to demolish an existing 468 square foot, one-story seasonal cottage and construct a 2,246 square foot, three-story, second principal, second principal building with a freestanding 720 square foot garage located at 303 and 305 Plymouth Ave., Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors' map, 124 on lots A3A, A4A, 1005, and 1006 in the R130 zoning district.
Thank you. Attorney Jillian Warren here, representing the applicant, I have Mr. Madden here as the engineer. I'm gonna approach and hand, I know it was emailed to you, but just the additional supplemental...
Please.
Do you have that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. So, I represent the Myers family. The Myers family has owned this property for some time, and this is a unique one. This, we're looking up at Plymouth Ave., where we have a site that's directly on the pond, and my client is proposing to move the seasonal cottage away from the pond and backwards on, on the lot. Now, we can go kinda back and forth whether it's a cottage, whether it's, whether it's not, which I'm happy to, to go into that. This has already gone through in conservation as well, so the conservation...
It has gone through?
Yes. So, in your package, you see there's order conditions. They're very happy about this cottage being moved away from the wetlands. In the supplemental materials that I gave you, I wanted to show you some of the pictures of this flooding, of what's happening with this cottage. So, that's in the smaller little packet that I gave you. You'll see the first few pictures are, it's underwater. So, the commissioner, we're looking for two variances, the commissioner in our package. You can see he denied this. He's saying there's basically two residences on one lot, and then we also are looking to put a garage in front of the residence, as you know. That needs either be the same or behind it. So, I wanna start with the first, the first variance here, because the, the property, it's interesting, but there's a question of whether things have merged here, 'cause the cottage, it's, if you look at the commissioner's letter, had said that it doesn't have the correct sanitary facilities, doesn't have a shower, things like that, but it is a structure. So, our bylaws don't actually define cottage, he's correct, but it does talk about a seasonable, seasonal conversion. So, that's page 17 on the definitions. So, one of the things that it talks about is, so if I, if I may, I wanna read that into record. A seasonal conversion, and in all your, your documents, you'll see pictures of the inside. There's a stove, there is a bathroom, there is full cable, there's a TV in there, there's dining. So, seasonal conversion, this is on page 18 under the definitions. A structure alteration designed or intended to extend the length of the occupancy of a seasonably occupied dwelling or guest unit, including but not limited to winterization, insulation of kitchen, or installation of a heating system. A dwelling or a guest unit shall be considered to be seasonal, and if it's occupied for 180 days or less in any 12-month period. So, not only Mary and her husband go and, come here for the summer, but prior to that, she, her family has been there, so her grandmother was there. The other lot has a residence of full time that's her brother. So, it's owned within a family trust. So, what we're looking to do is this seasonal cottage, they wanna make this, you know, a full-time residence, push it away from the water. So, because we're not building right where the existing nonconformity is, that's where the variance comes to push it up, as well as the garage. So, I don't know if anyone had an option, you need to be able to walk the site, which I did.
I haven't.
Okay. So, I went in the rain, and it was interesting elevation, so which Mr. Madden can talk about. And so, walking down there, the terrain. So, if we're, we're looking at a variance, this is a very classic example of this topography, and the, the need of that this lot is unique, that it's almost underwater where this cottage is, to move it back, and the terrain's difficult. So, what they're looking to do is actually build this property, this single family, into kind of the hill. So, we can discuss that part, Phil.
So, what have we, we've, this cottage is, is what, a pre-existing nonconforming?
Yeah, 1930s it's been there.
So, it's a pre-existing nonconforming use?
Yeah, yeah. And it actually is taxed as a single family. Yeah, this is an interesting...
It's taxed as a single family?
Yeah. This is an interesting area in town, because it's half land court and half registered land, so it gets a little sticky with as far as the lots go over there. So, the front, near the water where this cottage is, is taxed as the single family, and then right behind it, where we are moving to, is taxed as undevelopable land behind it.
It's moving from residential zone to undevelopable land?
That's what it's taxed.
Undevelopable for why?
So, you know, I'm not sure why it's taxed that way.
Just the way that it's taxed.
Yeah.
Maybe it's small size frontage could be...
Yeah, but the build itself, um...
But there's already, other than this cottage, there's another?
Yes. Yeah, there's another full four-season property that her brother lives in, Paul Myers. So, um...
Just so that I, when I get something stuck on my head, I gotta erase it or resolve it. So, this is in the flood zone. If, if the house is in the water, if the rivers come...
Literally, this house is probably six feet away from the water, and as, has been sinking down into the lot. The chimney's the only thing that's staying up, and everything's going down. So, they're, by moving that away from the water, which is on its own lot to begin with, now they're taking that house off of that lot and moving it up higher up the hill to get it away from the flood plain.
So, if you go to Exhibit C, this might be helpful for you to kinda see the different lots.
Yeah, that might...
What we're talking about. It's behind the Butters list.
Exhibit C, AB...
You can see how these, I don't know how, why it's happened.
Let me see where I am.
Yep.
I'm, I'm on the building inspectors thing.
So, Exhibit C, it's right behind the Butters list, just so you can kinda take a look at these lots now.
Okay, okay, let me get there. Yeah, let me get over there with you. Exhibit C, huh?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense to you? That's why it's like, the smaller lot in the front is where the cottage is, and has always been since 1930. So, that one is the 1005.
Okay.
Okay, the cottage is there.
So...
Looking at 84A is vacant. There's actually a driveway, if you did go on the premises, there's two driveways already. There's, for 303 and 305, but A3A...
So, which lots? Let me get my highlight, my, you know, me and my crayons, you know? So, we want 105, 1005, and there's a cottage on it. What else do they own?
They own A4A, they own A3A, 1006, and they actually own across the street as well, but...
What, they got across the street?
Those are the B ones.
The Bs, the A4A, A and B, three?
Which they tax as one lot, so they own that as well. So...
So, but it, even though there's a street going through it, it's, it's all part of the, it's all on the same deed?
All in the, yeah, you'll see how big the deed is.
But they don't have A2A, or A2B, or A13, or any of that jazz? Okay. So, it's six little pieces?
Yep. So, we're looking to move this, well, demolish the cottage that's on the water and build the new full four-season house for Mary and her husband there. One thing that's interesting about this site is that there's a six-bedroom septic that was created, actually GAF did it, I'm not sure when it was done, years ago, but the idea is to make it so there's three bedrooms in the A3A house, and then this other lot will have three bedrooms as well.
So, the existing house that's not getting torn down is on A3A?
Yes.
And they wanna take a cottage that's on the same deed as 1005 and put it up on A4A?
Well, we wanna demolish that and create a new house.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The idea is, um...
But it's all, it's all under, it's all under one owner?
Yes.
And it's 130,000 square feet. So, it's really, even though the town may send them four or six different...
There's lots of tax bills that go.
It's, it's, it's one lot.
Right.
It's, it's all comes together as one lot, and we can count the square foot...
In the future, you know, looking at this case, we have to go to land court to be able to break these lots up. So, it's, that, as you know, is a very time-consuming process. So...
No, I get it. I, I...
We kinda wanted to get this out.
Our former peer engineer answered the question for me, 'cause I could never understand why, you know, you own lots that have been, by a matter of zoning, have been combined, because the rules say they have to be combined, but the town continues to send multiple bills and multiple lots, and he gave me a real simple answer. Until, until somebody pays an engineer to go out and redraw it, it stays as a separate lot, but it's under a single ownership. So, I kinda, I kinda get it. So, we've got a house on, even though it's showing us six lots here, we've got a house on this one lot. What's the, do you know rate in your notes anywhere? What's the total square footage of all six lots?
It's 72,559. That's not counting the one across the street.
Seventy-two what?
Seventy-two, 759, 1.67 acres.
Seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two thousand, 759 square feet.
Oh, so it's...
There's this piece here.
So, these lots are bigger than I thought. They look small on this thing.
Yeah.
No, they're good-sized lots.
It's one of the little...
That's why I'm asking, yeah.
I mean, the two ones in the bottom are definitely a little...
And that's not counting A4B and A3B?
No.
And how much, how much land do they have? Do you know? Sorry, it just helps me, it helps me follow. If you don't know, you don't have to.
I mean, to go out there and walk and look, I mean, it definitely helped me understand what was going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and for what they're doing, I, you know, for them having to lose a lot on a cottage on a lot, move it up. I mean, there's a little bit of hardship there, I can see. I mean, they can't rebuild it there. I mean, the board building is just sinking down.
No, I'm looking at this map here, and I'm thinking of the 3,500 square foot lots, and you know, the houses where they cut, you know, the guy opens his window, and the guy next door puts his coffee cup out, and they put sugar in it, and he brings it back in. It's not like that. Go ahead.
So, are there any more questions of where the house, so there's a house on, on A3A, and the cottage is on 105, 1005.
Yeah, so, so on this thing, is the house closer to the, is that a dirt road or a paved road, by the way?
So, there are two entrances, right on the left side of the A4, that's one driveway, and there's a driveway on A3, like on the top of it. So, two separate driveways, actually.
Two separate driveways, and...
And you can kinda loop around right now.
Is the existing house, like, up where this new one is gonna go, on the...
It is further, it's closer to the road, because...
So, it's set back 30, 40 feet from the road, something like that?
Yeah, and it's all woods. If you actually drive up there, you can't even see the cottage at all.
So, the, the new house will be a little forward from the existing house, but with the garage, the garage will bring it closer to the main road.
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, okay. Thanks, sorry, but you know...
It, it is tricky, and that's why the, I'm glad you went to the site.
Still clear as mud to me, but it's clearer.
As far as how high that up, Mr. Madden, isn't it like 50 feet? I mean, the elevation to go down?
Yeah, we don't show the park real up to the, to this, to the...
But you're going, so, so the other question I have is, you know, when you're in the flood plain and you're doing more than 50%, of the value of a structure and all this stuff, you're ripping it right down, so you're certainly doing, gonna spend more. You're taking...
It's moving it out of the flood plain.
You're taking a, a bread box and turning it into a McMansion. It's very small, to 2,200 or something. But, so the cost is more than 50%, does it have to go up on stilts?
No, because it's, it's a different flood zone. This is a Zone A with no elevation determined, and that's really just focusing on the, really the shoreline. You can see the dotted, see that dotted line?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the flood zone line that's in there, and since it's associated with a pond, freshwater pond, not a, not a coastal wetland or a coastal...
So, Harry Kane's not gonna make a big wave come through and...
We're, we're not gonna have...
Need to go under the house?
Correct. We're not gonna have those occurrences at this site, at this site. So, the predominant flood zone is Zone X, which is...
And there's a couple of DMs between here and the ocean.
Um, there's a, again, this is...
Over at the Elks, there's one, I think.
It could be.
One up at Maple Park, just before Maple Park.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, um...
Okay, so, yeah.
Got an idea of the topic.
You know, I'm drawing a mental picture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Or at least I'm mental, anyway, if I don't have a picture.
So, on the smaller package, if you look through, you saw all this flooding, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, as far as the first statutory requirement for variance and the topography, I mean, this is, this is classic, that it's due to the topography that we're asking for this variance. We moved up. As far as if this was, we, we can't, we're not gonna, the Myers's are looking to spend over a quarter million dollars, three quarters of a million dollars on this new build. So, to do that on the water, first of all, conservation wouldn't want that. Second of all, that'd be silly for what they're trying to do, right, if it's gonna flood. The other piece...
This kinda answers a lot of my questions.
Yeah. So, it was there, it was their grandparents. Mary Myers's grandfather would go down there, and their grandmother reside there in the summer as well. So, it's always, it's been in the family, and now it's with a brother and sister, so she wants to make it so she can be... As far as a hardship for us, I mean, it's, it's clear at this point, being able, she wants to move here and retire here as well, both of them, so, and make this full, full season. They wouldn't be able to do anything really with that cottage as far as making that four seasons. The, so, in our opinion, this does hit the variance threshold. I'm sure Mr. Madden wants to go through some of the details. The, the second variance, I've, I've done a bunch of those here before regarding garages in front of, in front of primary residences. This is waterfront. The last photos in your package show the Director Butter, 301 Plymouth Ave., has a giant, like a substantial garage in front of his, in front of his primary residence, meaning that the pond is right there. People wanna enjoy that. And again, this isn't, when you go down Plymouth Ave., you're not even gonna really see, this isn't a, a small lot like the other ones ahead. It's, it's pretty substantial. So, it, the primary reason why we have that garage not in front of the, the house is, we don't want garages right on the road, right? And it's aesthetically not...
I get, I, I think we got like three issues here. Number of buildings per lot, the, the garage being in front of the house, and the alteration of existing and other structures, blah, blah, you know, but, but, I'm personally, I've never had a problem with when you make an L-shaped building, or you put a garage more forward, that's not an issue to me, especially... Let me just look up...
I don't have an issue with that.
Veronica, you care if the garage is closer to the street than the front door of the house?
Well, I don't personally care, but what's the reason that it wouldn't be behind the house, again?
Yeah, so it's...
It'd fit the lot, I think.
It would be down into the flood zone.
It would be. The elevation of this is like, it's pretty steep, 50 feet down. So, the, the house is already gonna be built into the, to the...
Hill.
Hill, right? So, putting the garage would be like pretty much where the cottage is. So...
Okay.
It's also, it's also the level area. When you come in through the driveway, they come down to where it, you know, pretty much the only spot that levels out in that area, that's where the garage would be, where you wouldn't have to put an emergency brake onto park or anything.
Okay. I just want, I'm just saying, if, if, as a board, if we're kinda comfortable with the garage issue, let's not waste a lot of time on it, and...
And, and also, she did... And also, she did, Attorney Morton did mention, it's heavily wooded in the front of the house. You'd go right by it. If I wasn't looking for it today, I would have gone by it and probably gone by it coming back. It's, it's the way it's tucked in around the corner with the woods out in front. I couldn't believe how much it opened up once you got down inside there.
And with respect to the garage in the house, if you look at that plan, the northerly port sideline of the garage and the southerly sideline of the house, they're basically on the same plane. So I think from the street, it lends, lends the image of a, of a single fam, of a single-family dwelling with a, with an attached garage, just by the layout of the structures on that, on that site. The garage is around 20 feet away from the house, so it's a, it's not a terrible walking distance to the house, to the house from the garage. And it also provides us, it also allows us the provision to put a decent area for parking, a flat area, so to speak, for, for parking in front of the garage as well, that wouldn't be, that would not be available as you get closer to the pond.
So, just trying to, I'm trying to justify it in my own head, because the bylaw says, it's one, it's one lot, and the bylaw says one house per lot.
Yeah.
Sometime in the, sometime in the existence of the town of Wayham, since it was, since it was Indians and before or now, this was probably in a 30, MR30 or an R30 zone or something. And zoning has changed. And all, well, I'm sure when these lots were created, they were conforming. And they were 3,500 square feet apiece. But because they're owned by the same person, now they're non-conform. Well, you know, I get that whole thing, you know, it's, the town creates a hardship, is the way I've looked at it.
Yeah, I understand, and it's, and it's tricky for me as the attorney, because merger theory is talking about vacant land. In my opinion, this isn't vacant land, because it has had this cottage there for 19...
Yeah, I got...
We've done tons of cases that have merged.
The two residents, and it's been there for more than 10 years.
Yeah, it's 1930, so almost 100 years.
That's more than 10 years, I think.
We're talking about like almost 100 years. So, you know, has it merged? That's not really something that, I don't think it has.
No, that 10-year thing kind of got me, you know, 20 applica, maybe 100 applications ago, when somebody was, one guy was, you know, poking the stick at the other guy, the neighbor fight, and he stood up and said, hey, it's been there for more than 10 years. And they said, oh, yeah, and then the, you know, so I get...
I will comment on this application exhibit C. You see, there is, all the neighbors are sent to this. They're, they're...
Exhibit C says, all the neighbors are here, go and let them do it?
Yeah, unless there's someone here I don't know, which I haven't been contacted.
We'll find out.
We will find out. But everyone's in favor. They've been, you know, great neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Do we have a copy of that, the site plan? I don't have anything in my packet. I was trying to get a better look at it, I don't see it.
I thought I, maybe I, I have, yeah, I have piles of mergers, small half sizes, sorry about that.
That's all right. I made a mistake once, too. Once.
But you were mistaken, right?
Thank you.
I thought I was wrong, but it turned out I was right, yeah. Okay. So Exhibit C is letters. Any questions from the board? You guys got any, any more information you want to provide before I seek opinions from the room?
The garage, which is proposed to be in the front...
But it's attached, right?
It's not attached.
Oh, it's detached?
It's detached, yeah.
I believe Mr. Madden said it looks like it would be attached from the road.
So you said it's very woodsy in the front of the lot?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, so you wouldn't even see that at all, anyway.
So you won't see that...
So, yeah, if you look at the second last picture in the little packet I have, the one with the turkey, that's a garage next door. And then the one behind it is the house.
This is the original set of plans, right? This is the original group?
On the smaller one, the second one I gave you.
On the smaller one?
Just so you could see a comparison.
Yeah, yeah.
If you tried to see if that individual needed to get a variance, I didn't find anything of record, so that was really confusing for me. But it's not our case, so it doesn't matter, but...
Did you help, did you bring those turkeys in and stage them for the pictures?
Yes.
So we'd feel like it was, you know, very rural there?
Yep.
You're a very clever lady. Okay. All right. Veronica, you still, you still...
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm just...
Yeah, keep, that's...
You know, the, the size is a little, definitely changes from what's there.
Oh, yeah.
And then also having the...
Moving out of a camper and into a... Yee-haw.
What do you want to speak to, as far as it's, the, it meets all the other zoning, right? So you're talking...
All the setback distances, yes.
The lot, the lot area?
Yes, it does.
So that's the other thing, we are by right, this could, well, by right. But what I'm saying is, we're not seeking variances on the actual size of that dwelling. I know it has changed, because it's bigger, but...
But it meets setbacks as far as property lines and from the street? Except, isn't this in that zone where they want the houses like 80 feet from the street? Or did we fix that in the bylaws yet?
No, I think the setback distance is, actually, the front setback is 100 feet.
Yeah.
So...
You're giving us 100 feet?
It's more than 100.
Okay.
There's actually, if you did drive down there, you saw there's kind of a gully, where it's all, it's all woods, so it's kind of two high points, a gully in between. And that's flat area, so the one house, and then where we're proposed is the other house.
I've been to a couple of houses up there.
Really strange terrain right there, and these huge pine trees, so...
Just for, there's a line right here, it says 100-foot setback, a dotted line. You have it on your sketches there, so...
Yep.
You look at that, that's 100 feet from the frontage, and we have about another 100 feet, maybe a little more. So that house is setback roughly 200 feet from Plymouth Ave.
And we're under the 35 feet as well, as far as height. We're under 35 feet. I know that's something that concerned with the elevation.
So I'm noticing here that it's within that 100-foot buffer zone. Why is it, why isn't it moved out of that zone to be...
Out of the...
Yeah, I feel like it's within that 100-foot buffer zone for building, I...
That 100-foot buffer zone is representative of the 100-foot buffer zone to the, to the pond. And so that's a, that's a buffer zone that's associated with Conservation Commission. And it's not an off-limits area by any stretch. We were able to obtain permit, which we did get for this work. In Wayham, we have a 30-foot no-activity zone adjacent to a wetland resource area. So no construction can occur within that, within that 30-foot band. But between 30 and 100 and beyond, you can do work there, provided you obtain a permit from Conservation, which we, which we have.
I feel like, I, I know that it's 100 feet, or is it 150 for building? I feel that if, I do think that it's a, a stretch to call it a secondary residence as it exists. But it is there, and it simulates one, I guess, a little bit. My feeling, though, is that if this is going to be demolished and the residence is going to be allowed, I feel that it should be conforming to bring it out of that zone, which is for the protection of the water. I do agree that it is improving, because you're going to take that down. It's practically in the water right now. But that being said, I feel that it should be moved on the other side of that 100-foot buffer zone.
You'd move it closer to Plymouth Ave, though?
Correct, yeah.
That's what you're saying.
Yes, so if it's going to be allowed, that would be my feeling, to fully protect the pond, demolish what's there, and bring it out of the buffer zone.
How would that, how would that affect us as far as the setback?
Well, it, it wouldn't. It's already been vetted through Conservation. Conservation issued in order conditions to allow the construction to occur within the 100-foot buffer zone. So, you know, we met the performance standards for buffer zone work, but performance standards are not very rigorous. But, but, but you are allowed to conduct an activity in that 100-foot buffer zone. And in Wayham, unlike a lot of towns, there's a, there's a 30-foot no-activity zone. So we can work in that 30 to 100-foot band. Prohibited to work in the 30-foot band to the, from the, from the wetland to the, to the 30-foot band. So that's where the town has, has achieved its most protection with wetland resource areas by prohibiting an activity that general, you know, what they found is that activities that occur within around 25 feet, 30 feet of a wetland, they likely encroach into the wetland and beyond over time. So, you know, in this town, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty strict rule. There's, there's many, there's a few exemptions that you can, that we can do work within that 30-foot zone, but not too many. So it's really, it's a, it's an off-limits area that, that Conservation takes advantage of.
They, they have approved it and gave you the permit already.
Yes.
I will just comment on that, if I may, because, you know, when the Miyes came to me and when Bill and I were looking at project, we were always like, do we go Conservation, do we go zoning? This is just for your own opinion, because, and I, you know, it's Conservation at this point, because if Conservation didn't like this, we wouldn't...
Wouldn't have been, there would have been no sense coming here.
Right, so I, I understand absolutely what Ms. Debonis is saying. It's just, that's the reason why we went there.
You would have moved it up above the 100-foot if there was a problem.
Yeah, we would already, yeah. So it's for us to then move, move it again, and then go back and get a modification there. It's, you know, it's tough, because we're just looking at zoning here.
Sounds, sounds to me like they put the horse in front of the cart instead of most people putting the cart before the horse.
No, I think that, I agree with the, you know, I'm glad you did it that way. Thank you. Veronica, you, I, you're still uneasy?
No, I, I feel like they probably just went a better scenario than is existing, because I know what the, the requirement is. I worked on a property that was similar to this, and it was a pain in the neck. Conservation didn't want to budge. There should be no new building within that buffer zone. I understand that you have the approval. But I thought you also said that there was an existing six-bedroom septic, and this is, is it, am I seeing a proposed septic here?
Might be seeing a proposed septic tank. There's a leaching field that's marked off with little triangles in there. Just above, what you see is the stone trench that we're talking of, that you might be looking, it says, "Proposed 2x3 stone trench." That's a stormwater management element on the site. And if you go just above that, you can see these dotted lines running north to south, and they're tagged off with little triangles. That's where the existing leaching field is for the septic and the expansion area.
Is that under the driveway, or?
A portion of it, that's the reserve area, the reserve area is.
Yeah, okay.
The driveway. It has been designed for H20 loading on, on the septic. Like Jillian said, we, we did that plan some time ago. So, you know, we're, we're outside, well, we don't, we don't need to comply with anything with Board of Health, because that leaching field is existing at, at the present time. So it was designed for six bedrooms, and that's what will be serviced, a six-bedroom septic will be servicing both of those homes.
So the existing septic is going to, so the two homes are on a shared septic?
They're all, they're on a shared septic now.
Yeah.
The cottage, they...
So is the cottage pumping up to it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
It probably pumps it up at what, 13, 14 feet?
And the new one's going to pump to it as well, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Again, that's Board of Health and Conserva, that's really not, I'm just, now it's just general conversation more than zoning. Okay.
So, but it's important to recognize, though, on that, you know, that 100-foot buffer, I probably do 200 Conservation Commission hearings a year, and you can count on really one hand where you cannot work within that 100-foot zone. It's, it's truly an area that's subject to regulation, and you're able to, you are able to work in. It's not, it's not a resource area, it's a buffer zone to a resource area, the, with the underlying provision yet.
There's 30, there's a 30-foot stay-out zone, right?
Yes.
And then beyond the 30, and, and we're up into a different zone that's...
So...
Yeah, it's...
We're in the, we're in the buffer zone as opposed to the no-activity zone. So that's how I would make a distinction, is that we have an area that we can't work in, and then we have an area that we can work in...
Work in, but you're going to play by the...
With, with a permit, and then beyond that, unregulated, to some degree. I mean, but it's not regulated by Conservation beyond that 100-foot.
But that makes it...
So what I was also getting towards, so if, if anybody made anybody to move anything from where it goes, then the septic system has to be moved also.
Because the septic system, ah, yeah, good point. Moving the house forward closer to the street, you'd, you'd be killing that septic system. You'd be moving into it, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I mean, it adds another degree of complication to the project.
Yeah, all right. Veronica, you still got questions, or you still...
So, I know that that's my feeling. I know that we only have a four-member board. So that being the case, we could always continue it. But I know that I would want a requirement that had come out of that zone.
So we got a...
If I, if I may, the chair, I really think this would warrant the members who haven't been on the site to do a site visit. I know that the clients would be happy to arrange that whenever someone wants to, so you can actually see the elevation, see where the cottage is. I know we do that on some occasions, it might be helpful. I, I did it, and I think it opened my eyes a bit about the site.
Would it be helpful for you to be able to go there?
And I don't think you have to organize anything, because I pulled in, and the folks came right out, and it was a nice conversation, and they walked me through everything.
No, I guess it's, it's the distance from the water that concerns me in, you know, where it's being moved from the water. I think it should be moved completely out of those types of areas, because it's a completely new build. So I feel like it should comply with what the regulation is in the town, in those terms. I understand that the Conservation gave the permit for it.
What regulation is it that you want it to know?
No new construction in that area is...
Is it a no-new construction? That's what, that's what I'm running to stand on.
Well, it'll give me time to look, because I know what I'm, I know what I'm thinking about.
We'd be happy to get maybe some documentation from Josh, the Conservation Agent, to, to just chat about that, you're the Order of Condition, take a look at.
So we need, we're going to need to continue, I think.
We can continue, that's okay, yeah.
Before we do that...
Can I ask a question, though? If we continue, it's not going to increase any of our voting.
Well, you'll have another member who could sit on it if they listen, no?
That's a problem, and that's something we should have dealt with.
Neither one of them here, they didn't sit on it, they can't vote.
Yeah.
They can't listen to the...
We just opened it tonight, and if they're not here tonight, they can't jump on. We got a four-member board, and, and I kind of apologize for that.
No, I knew, I knew, it's fine.
I know you knew, but we didn't say it on the record.
That's all right.
Well, it'll give me a chance to review...
That's fine.
How, how I'm looking at it and what I like to see, and if, if it's not... How, how I'm looking at it and what I like to see, and if, if it's not.
We don't have Jacob or Najee on Zoom, do we?
If it's not, then, then I'm fine, but I'm.
Yeah, that's fine. We've waited, you know, this, this long, so.
Two weeks isn't gonna kill you?
I actually, and, and can't be in two weeks, it needs to be two weeks after that.
Okay.
I'm not here.
I'd still, before I go to the public, I'd still like to turn, any comments from you, Richard?
Oh, I'll say my piece.
The only comment I have is, is there a difference in the, in the water with the zoning, with conservation? Does it make a difference if it's ocean title or freshwater?
No, it's, it's just the, it's just the resource area identified in the Wetlands Protect, in the Wetlands Protection Act. And if you, if you dig through it enough, you know, they have, they have preambles to updated versions of the act, and, you know, there's a very, there's a very good one for buffer zone, describing the buffer zone and why the department allows people to work within that 100-foot zone. And I'm happy to share that, that document with you. I think it sheds a lot of, um, a lot of light on why you can do it, and, you know, what the difference is between the resource area and the buffer zone to the, to the resource area. Just, it's, uh, it makes sense, I'd be happy to provide it to you.
I'd be happy to put together, I know, like, for example, 17 Murphy Street that was in front of you, that was right on the water, and it was in the 100-foot. So, and they approved it. So, I can get together some examples, and, and that means we have an order of condition, meaning the conservation agent is gonna have eyes on this when the build happens, and they have to approve it, right, under certain conditions. And if they don't, then they get a violation, so. But, yeah, I'd be happy if we need, wanna continue it, that's fine, for November 8th.
Okay. All right, before I turn to the public, though, I wanted to ask the commissioner if, if building, you have any comments or anything you'd like to add, or any? You, you see, here's the scoop. He, he's had a chance to look at, he, before he wrote this letter, I'm sure he looked and did a, you know, we're kinda looking at it for the first time, so.
Absolutely, yep.
So. Microphone should be on now. I hear that feedback says it kinda is.
Paul Turner, Building Commissioner. I think my letter that I, denial letter that I wrote sums it up, and I, I'm gonna just stick by that.
You're, you're good with what you wrote.
Yeah, so that, that is for your information, you can read it, you can make your determination off of that.
There's nothing that you wanna emphasize or reinforce, we, we, you.
Yeah, what the letter states is, is how I.
Okay.
See the project.
Thank you, all right. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn to the room, to Zoom. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this application? Anybody that has anything? It's, it's one of them speak now or forever hold your peace type things. Hi, come on up. You can't talk to me from there. You have to come up into the chair, and you have to give your name and all that stuff. Yep, that microphone.
My name is Dolores Antonino, I'm here with my husband, John. We're the owners of the 307 Plymouth Ave, which abouts 305 and obviously 303. We're here in support of this building project, because we know that their beautiful little old family cottage by the water has.
Seen better days?
Has had its life.
Showing its age?
And they would, you know, they're, they're every summer, and I'm sure they, now that they're retiring and planning to live there full-time, this house will be, it'll be nice to have another full-time neighbor. It is a very woodsy area and not totally occupied by year-round people. So, it'll be nice to have that project go through, and I don't think there's a person in the, on the street in that general area who sees any reason for them not to build. So, we're fully in support of this going forward.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, I, I have, um, another question for the applicant, or the building commissioner, or the engineer, or anybody that can answer it, or is willing to. If we said, nah, you can't tear this building down, you can't build a new one, by right, could they enlarge the cottage right where it is?
I'll throw my, my two cents in, I believe, yes, they could.
What's the commissioner think? So, if we said, if we say, nah, we're gonna be stinkers, and we're not gonna let you do this, go back to the drawing board, they could go back to the drawing board and they can come into you and say, okay, we'll stay where we are, we're going up 35 feet, we're staying on the same footprint, we'll put a new foundation under it. I don't care if we have to dry sheet piles into the ground, we're doing it.
It's non-conforming, it's in the rear setback.
Yeah, but it's pre-existing.
If you're gonna, but if you're gonna increase the height or anything like that.
Yeah.
It would be very slow, because you can't double the cost of it either. Sorry to interrupt you.
You can, go ahead.
And that, that also too.
What is it?
You couldn't substantially improve that, because it is in the flood zone where it's, where it's at.
I just asked that question earlier, I thought that that doesn't kick in.
Where they're, where the new build is, it's in Zone X.
Oh, okay, okay.
The cottage is in.
So, if they go there, they gotta go, if they, if they stayed there, they'd have to go up on stilts.
If I may, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, they don't, no.
They don't?
No, they would just be limited, their budget would be limited to 50% of the current value of the structure only, not the land.
So, but what if their budget was, if their budget exceeded 50%, then they'd have to go up on stilts?
It'd have to be elevated, yes.
They could come with a crane, pick the house up, put stilts under it, put the house back down on it, then they could come with another building permit and take the roof off and go up two stories over that.
Mr. Matt, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think.
You know, where they're gonna, where they would get stuck is working outside the footprint of the existing building, because we're gonna be in that 30-foot no-activity zone that we're prohibited from doing any work in with conservation.
To conservation, wait.
We really, we really couldn't do that.
If I may, I, I do have a.
If it lived in the footprint, maybe.
I have an example, because I, I didn't ask the clients about this in the beginning, and they were able, Priscilla Ave, which is nearby on the water, there was an existing build that actually did this, so it's a before and after, and they did do the stilts. I mean, and they used the footprint and really, I don't know how high that is or whatever.
Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, as far as if the kind of the one sticking point is this water right now, this is the complete opposite.
That's the reason for my question. Yeah, you get my, the reason for my question is.
It's gonna overburden the, the waterway there, so.
I just, you know, sometimes the devil you know and the devil you don't know are two different entities, but, so I just want, you know, I just want to be, I just want to be clear in my own brain, too. That's all. I saw somebody when we, when I was talking before, I saw somebody waving at me, is there somebody in, did you wanna, did, sir, did you wanna come up and make a comment?
I think Paul covered it.
Paul covered it? Okay, okay, I just didn't want you to feel, you're not hiding behind the easel or anything. Okay. All right, anybody else? I think at this point, um, are you all set? I can see you kinda like on the edge of your chair, like, I kinda do, like. Pardon me?
I'm Mary, why don't you come up?
Mary, yeah, I kind of, your body language said you really wanna, you might be shy.
I was taking Jillian, Jillian would be like, Mary, come up and talk, so I just.
Yeah.
It's okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna say anything, you know, on towards, or, but the, the 100-foot buffer, it also goes, going up the hill also. So, I think when they, they do that around the water, your 100-foot is, is if it's, you know, straight land. So, I think that as you elevate, you're protecting even more. Like, my parents did this six-bedroom septic on their own, it wasn't asked for, because they were concerned about the lake. They were concerned about, you know, having the house so close, he, they wanted to make sure that they were, and they spent extra to make sure that we could drive on it and that it was going to be, you know, more than enough as far as the future of their children. So.
Funny how parents worry about their kids like that, isn't it?
They were awesome, and, and my brother and I both have the opportunity to be able to, you know, fulfill our dreams of retiring here as they did, and the, so this cottage here, we're not, you know, over the 100-foot buffer zone, but we are 50 feet from, from that, and it's already starting to incline, because we're cutting that into the, to the hills, so that, you know, we're already going up as far as that's concerned. And as far as the size of the property, I mean, that's, that's a walkout basement. So, you have the walkout basement, and then from the hillside, from the street side, your, your, your door goes into the main floor. Okay, so there's the main floor and the basement, and then we put, we did put, because we have two, two daughters, we did put a bedroom up in the attic.
Oh, attic children.
Yes, so we did put, so yes, it, it was written as like 2264 three-level house, and, and, but, and it is true, you know, obviously, but it, it's the basement with the walkout to the, to the lakeside, and then from the hillside, from the street side, we're walking into that main level, and then we have stairs going into the attic, and where we did build, we did build a, a bedroom on that. So, you could, yes, it is three floors, 2264, I mean, as far as you work that out, when you have this, and you have the one bedroom with the, with the bathroom, so that was the only, the other point.
You don't have to apologize to me for three floors.
Yeah, the plan, the plan does a great job of showing that at the very bottom, how that slope goes up.
Yeah, bylaws allow for three floors.
Yep. So, for us to do anything that might hinder the lake is, is not what we want to do, but 100-foot buffer, now we get into that, that super-duper septic system that GAF made for us, or for my parents, and we wouldn't want to do anything that would be unto.
I got you. So, what do you got, chambers there, and they get those ones that a cement truck could drive over or something like that, is it?
They're H20 loading, so I would say, yes, I don't know if these are, these are concrete or plastic chambers, but, but they're designed to be driven on.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, that was kind of thought.
So, before the new septic system was put in, the old septic system of the cottage was?
Yeah, I know. Well, that was the whole thing.
So, it's, that's, that's why you're taking care of the lake by, number one, you put the new septic system in, your parents did, and got the sewage from not sitting in the water and polluting the water up on the hill and being able to be discharged the correct way.
Right, and we had the.
And so now you've actually been a steward of the land way before you were a steward of the land.
Yes, exactly. My parents is, this is, this is going on their, you know, footsteps on their example of, of taking care of what we have loved since, you know, I was five years old, you know, so that's where we went. And as far as the garage is concerned, they're kind of like side by side, but they're like this. So, yes, it is in front of it, but it is also side by side. So, I can see your point from the, from the street, they do look like they're, they're next to each other, but you can't even see it from the street, because there's the street, there's the gully, there's a flat area, and then, and then it starts to come down towards the water, and that's where we're going to, you know, put that house inside the hill to, just for drainage, and a lot of trenching and drainage that GAF did for us, just to make sure that everything is protected and, and taken care of, so that the lake doesn't get any runoff or any, any of those, those issues that could happen. So, as far as, you know, the 30-foot no-activity zone, the house isn't there, the flood zone, we're away from that, and, and that was very important for us, too. And to be, you know, over 50 feet, 52 feet from the closest water, because if you take a look at it, the edge of the pond goes like this and like that, so this is the closest to it, where the house is, you know, you're getting closer and closer. But, you know, as far as the closest cornering of that, we're at, the edge of the start of the house is at, is at 52, and it's elevated, and all of this is pumped up into the, that septic system that was made for us.
Thank you, thank you. Thank, no, you know, I'd much rather have you come up and say it than wish you, you know, go home tonight and wish you had. And, again, I think we're gonna need to continue. I'm gonna make the comment into the record that I have, I have a saying that, you know, I think from listening to the room, a lot of people can look at the plan and get it, and I have a saying, and that is, a pitch is worth a thousand words, and thank you for the pitches, but an onsite visit is worth a thousand pitches. So, I encourage anybody that's got any questions, are you, is this the lady that you ran into when you went there?
Yes, and her husband.
And her husband?
My husband's behind the.
Okay.
Oh, he's hiding.
And my brother is here also.
So, anybody, any of you three folks got any problem, if any of us show up, if we wanna come see? No, no, no.
Not at all.
No dog's gonna come out and bite ankles or anything?
They let me run over the dogs' beds to leave, so the dogs can't be too angry.
The dogs, okay.
Watch out for turkeys.
Watch out for the turkeys, are they, are those, are those attack turkeys, or?
I would respectfully request a continuance till November 8th, which is your first meeting, I believe, in November.
I seen, I seen Sonia writing, if we have, if we could get a motion for that, I'd like to take a vote.
So moved.
So, we have a motion to extend until our first meeting in September, in November, not going backwards.
Yes.
No Dorian, huh? So, and do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Moved by Troy, seconded by Veronica, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
We're continued.
Thank you.
I thank you for your patience with us and your, you know, time to answer our questions. Thank you very much, we'll see you on return. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna hold on to this.
Give him one, yeah. Okay. Turned his in, and already, just throw it over here, I'll grab it.
Thank you. Now, you more to move your legs a little, didn't you?
Go ahead, go ahead. I can take, I gotta read it into the record anyway, Richard.
No, no, sure, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, I got this cough that won't go away. Continue. And approved, done. One of our members has walked out of the room for a minute, but we'll be back, but during that time, I'm gonna read this in, save a little bit of time. And, again, before I even read this in, even though we said it during the last one, you get it, there's a four-member board here, and you'll never have more than a four-member board, because there's nobody on Zoom or anything, right? You with me, Jillian?
I am.
Okay. You've been forearmed or forewarned or for something, for better or for worse, so, I need to read. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 11, 2023, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 39-23 for a use variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, under the Wareham Zoning Bylaws, to Wareham Cranberry Highway LLC of 632 Washington Street, Southeastern Mass., care of Jillian Morton Esquire of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing the addition of a drive-through lane for a restaurant located at 3020 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessor's Map, 1301014, in the Commercial Strip Zoning District. And just, because I can't help myself, for anybody that doesn't know where this is, this is the, this is next to McDonald's, the old DeAngelo's building, I believe.
That's correct.
The old DeAngelo's.
Yep.
A former, maybe, I don't know how old it is, but it's the former DeAngelo's. Okay, go for it.
Attorney Jillian Morton here. I'm here for the applicants, and actually on Zoom, my team should be there, so, Mr. Koffman, David McCarthy, and then Philip, our engineer from CDG, so, if I do call him, let him in.
Okay.
About to kind of introduce the project. So, this application, obviously, we've already been introduced that this was the old DeAngelo's, and I wanna go to the denial letter here, which is obviously exhibit B, which I always have that, and what we're looking for is a variance, because we're in CS and we're not allowed to have a, a drive-through there, right? It's only allowed by the special permit in CG, I believe. So, we have to obtain a, a use variance on this site.
It's allowed, is it, is it listed as allowed by a special permit, or is it?
Oh, I think that's CG, if I'm correct, special permit, sorry. That's okay. The only zone that it's allowed, so, again, once again, something I think we should look at, but, right next door, there is a drive-through, McDonald's. Across the street, there was Wendy's, Kentucky Fried Chicken slash Taco Bell across the street.
Burger King.
Also have the new car wash, that's kind of a drive-through, if you want to say that. But anyways, so as far as, I'm just giving you the lay of the land. So that was the determination from the commissioner, that's what we looked at. And then I went and obviously scoped out the area, figured out a lot of those, those builds were already grandfathered, like McDonald's has been for, for how many years, right? So that's why we have to come in front of your board to seek this. There is a plan in there that you can actually see. We're not altering anything really on this site, except the little drive-through window, which I think is like a 5-by-10 little jut out where people will be able to get their food. Now, we do have an end user for this property proposed, which I did include information because I think that's important to know for you and the public of what we're proposing put there. So it's Otto's Pizza, which is originated in Portland, Maine. They have several locations in Maine, Massachusetts. So you have a package that kind of shows all the different, I mean, it's not just several, we're talking about nine in Maine. We already have, or not, I'm sorry, seven in Maine, seven in Mass. So, but what they do, it's not like I would say, I don't call it fast food, but it's gonna be, you know, gourmet pizza, but quick and easy, right? So you could be able to go get a slice through the drive-through or call ahead and kind of go and pick up the pizza. We don't have a definition regarding takeout window within our bylaws, so it's really a drive-through. So this would be ideal, obviously, for the client to be able to, on Cranberry Highway, people are commuting, they're moving in and out of there. So that's why this area has so many drive-throughs. So we do think it fits the nature of the neighborhood. I think some of the questions might be regarding parking and the, in the flow of traffic. You can see it's gonna be entrance only and exit only. So it talks.
It all flows in one direction.
Correct. Yep, so, you know, as far as signage and things go like that, we can surely do that similar right to McDonald's. And we have adequate parking. There's a parking table on our plan here. So you can see that the required, we'd need six spaces and provided we have 19, so we have plenty of parking, really. The site right now is all paved, as far as, there's a couple of little areas of landscaping, but we're not doing anything in respect of that as well. So that's what we're looking to do here, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions on the project or the end user or why.
I saw her plan, oh, there it is. There is, there is a small dining room.
Yep, yeah, just similar to your call. I think the history of the site is it was a DeAngelo's.
It was originally built as a butcher shop.
I heard it was a John Silver's before that.
You are correct.
It was before my time.
See, my memory's not as good.
Did it go from Arthur Treacher's to a John Silver's?
Arthur Treacher's was across the street. Long John Silver and Arthur Treacher, both came to Cape Cod to sell frozen seafood.
It was one of the fish.
Didn't work.
No, it didn't work.
One, why?
Yeah, so it's been sitting for a while since DeAngelo's has moved now to Pete's Papagino's, I believe.
Papagino's, yeah.
So, you know, they've combined, so to get, you know, an applicant here who wants to, again, further develop Cranberry Highway, as we can see across the street, that car wash is there, very busy. So we really think this will fit the neighborhood.
I think the other one's busy because the other one's not open.
What's that?
The other car wash up the road.
Oh, they're cleaning up.
It's not open? I've been there two weeks. I was going up to wash my wife's vehicle, and that thing, that building has not been open, and there's not a vacuum running. The only thing you can do is use the pressure washer.
Oh, really?
As far as, I mean, unless the guy went on vacation. I've been there two weeks, and that place has been.
So the drive, the, the, the automatic, the power wash is?
Everything else has got signs on it, and it's not open.
When you say the power wash, the self-serve? The stove where you can take the wand and wash the car?
Those are the only ones.
And the, and the drive-through at, funny, and the guy that built Rain Car Wash bought that. I wonder how that, you know, what a, what a coincidence.
Okay, so this project, you know, I really think it fits the nature of the neighborhood to have the drive-through, the value. We're looking for a use variance, so it's really up to your determination to decide if this is something that fits the nature of the neighborhood. It's a use, it's a use because it's a restaurant, but now we're seeking a restaurant with a drive-through, so it's technically on the use table.
The drive-through changes the use?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting. Well, I'll go on the record of, of restating my opinion about drive-throughs. Currently, I think I, I read within the last 24 hours that 90-some percent of McDonald's business is conducted through the drive-through. They build them without even having indoor seating these days. I think COVID taught us the value of drive-throughs.
With my experience, if they don't have enough people, that you either gotta call it in, use the kiosk, but they don't have anybody to talk to you.
Well.
That's what I get out of it.
That's, yeah.
It's not, it's not the fact that anything's going wrong, it's just that there's nobody to help you. And they're paying $18 an hour for 14-year-olds, so.
I get it. So I'm, I'm, I, I'll, you know, I'll come right out front early on in this conversation and tell you that I have no objection to drive-throughs, our bylaws do.
That's why we're the zoning board of appeals. We're not the zoning board.
Thank you. No, I, I, my, my, you know, I, I thank you because, you know, the words were in my mouth, but it was really nice to have them come out of somebody else's. You know, we fix the mistakes of others. That's what they call it an appeal for.
I have no problem.
Any comments? You must have some.
Of course I have.
We count on you.
I don't feel qualified to approve something like this without some kind of review, myself.
Okay. What kind, what is it that you need reviewed?
Maybe a site plan review. We have a lot of, you know, a lot of new construction that's going on around town. Everyone that's coming before us is having review of the site.
I think because of the changes of use, maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. It's over nine cars, doesn't it automatically go under site plan review or?
I'll say my point of view, and the commissioner wants to correct me on it, but I took a look at this because obviously I'm gonna try to advise a client correctly. I mean, his, I go by the commissioner's letter where he didn't say it triggered site plan review, so then I go to our applicability, site plan review section. So, you know, the applicability, any new development, expansion, or change of use other than single-family or two-family residents, under the parking schedule, number of parking schedules required, more than 10 parking spots. So our site doesn't require more than 10 parking spots. So am I correct?
Correct.
It doesn't.
So if it requires 10 parking spots, then it triggers site plan review.
So the number of parking spots isn't.
That's 15, 20 of the bylaw.
The parking spots has nothing to do with the number of seats in the dining room.
Yes, it does.
It does. So if you look at the big plan.
Yeah, no, that's what I was looking at before.
We did include a seating chart. The commissioner and I went back and forth, he needed to see a seating chart to make sure that the parking was applicable and that we had enough, so.
So you're not required to have nine.
We're not required to have 10.
You're driving them through, okay.
We have actually 19 spaces, but we're only required to have, it looks like.
I think six.
Six.
Okay.
So, I mean, I know through prior cases that you've been wanting site plan reviews, I understand that. But I think in, in this specific case, because there's not change other than this small de minimis, I would say, drive-through section, that's like a 10, 5-by-10, that it would be overly burdensome to the client and to be able to do that. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, so it's not, it's on my hands.
It's formally been through a site plan review for lighting, for drainage, for this, for that, for everything else, to be the, the things it has been in the past.
Right.
This is, I mean.
We're not changing any.
We're splitting hairs on saying it's a change of use, in my view, but.
I know.
But, okay, it's a change of use, you know? It was built as a restaurant, it's gonna be used as a restaurant, but we're changing the use, you know, so.
So I didn't see the change of use as the variance. The variance is to have a drive-through in a CS district as opposed to a CG, which is allowed. I'm not sure of change of use.
So it is a change of use on the use table. There's a separate restaurant section and then, or I think it's.
Oh, it's always got three.
Restaurant with drive-through, so it is like a.
It's a little commercial restaurant, drive-through.
So are you seeking a change of use or just a variance for a drive-through?
It's both. I mean, it's, it's.
Principal use, commercial.
Oh, yeah, use variance, yeah, you got the word use, and I'm just looking at what went out.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
To the butters and neighbors and don't want somebody coming and saying you fibbed to us, you know?
Not fibbing to you.
No, I know you're not, but.
Like I said, I did look at that because I, I obviously trust that the commissioner knows if it needs go through a site plan review. And the client wouldn't come here, not with full set plan unless we knew it had to. And that reading is really talking about new, new development, like we have had in the past recently, where you've requested the full site plan review, which I understand that. But this, we're not changing any of the, the park, like they're not repaving anything like that, it's a de minimis addition.
I guess the only, I'm trying to support my board member's position, and I guess the big question, when adding a drive-through, the word I've heard used is stacking, you know, when they pull off Cranberry Highway, they're gonna pull off, they're gonna go around the whole building before they get there. So there's, how many cars can stack before they get to the window? I think that would be the question, is that, do the plans show that?
So you're saying you'd want the plan to show how many vehicles could go like behind the building?
It's coming, you know, in other applications and other instances, that's been, you know, for Starbucks, for Dunkin' Donuts, for McDonald's, for no matter who comes in front of us with a drive-through, they're, they're always talking about stacking. And, you know, so the only thing I can figure is that they're, you know, they're not stacking the deck, it's not, they're not gambling, you know, they're.
Yeah, if we want to have, is.
If I may.
Is the line?
I mean, we, we've used that stacking, but it doesn't seem to work. Because again, I've been by Starbucks, and the line goes in, around, and it's out into the, into the entrance.
And that's.
So, you know, I really, I mean, I don't know how much we enforce it or what it is, but.
That, and I guess.
You could just be a pain in the.
I personally have, you know, I, I think, you know, I've said it upfront, I like drive-throughs, you know? I think, I, I think they're, I think they're good, good for the economy. They create jobs that, you know, for minimum skilled people, et cetera, that pay, like you said, 18 bucks an hour to say, what do you want? And push a button, you know, that's, but, but, you know, that's, but our bylaw, and I was, I was an advocate between bringing drive-throughs back and the planning board kind of altered what I suggested. And, and what is provided and what's offered right now, where it is offered is available, is they want it to come in off, they don't want it to come in off the highway, they want it to come in off a parking lot, so that if it does spill out, it's spilling out into a parking lot, not into the street. So I think the biggest concern, again, I'm trying to support where Veronica's coming from, is they made the road safer over there in that portion of Cranberry Highway. I know everybody in town likes to say Cranberry Highway, and it really refers from Buzzard's Bay to the old Conway at the, at the triangle there, but Cranberry Highway goes all the way to Waymouth. So, but, so you come down Cranberry Highway heading north, and it's a divided highway now already, and you're gonna turn into either McDonald's or to this one. If they're not jamming the pizzas out the window fast enough, the cars could, if they, if they can't fit in there, people are people, they're not gonna, they're not gonna use their brain and go park, they're gonna turn their blinker on and sit there in the highway and wait for somebody to jam a pizza 12 cars ahead of them out a window. And so that's the reason that we worry about stacking.
Okay, so you're saying on like the actual highway, it's stacking.
You know, they come down, they come down the high, well, no, stat, when we talk about stacking, we're saying how many cars can you stack onsite? So if you say I can stack 10 cars in line waiting to get a pizza, then it's easy for me to say, well, if it takes 10 minutes to cook a pizza and there's 10 cars, then if they're doing one every 10 minutes, they're gonna get them out, they can.
Our engineer actually has his hand up, so I.
So, okay, that's what, I was, I was waiting for some, you know, I was wait, thank you, is it Philip Henry?
Yes.
Okay, let's recognize him and let him, let him address that, come on, that.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. I tried to turn on my video, but I didn't see an option for it on my end, so perhaps.
Usually it's on the bottom left-hand corner, there's a little icon of a camera.
Yeah, I agree. There's only a speaker option.
You probably don't have a camera on whatever computer you're on, so you can't turn it on if it's not there. Oh, there it is. Hi, Phil.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you.
So I, I can respond to the, the queue question. So this site, where, where the existing building is located and where the proposed window is going to be, which is gonna be on the left-hand side, there's approximately 250 feet of, of queue capacity from the drive-through window all the way back onto Route 6, which would equate to about 12 cars, which is fairly generous based on my experience. And, and if you looked at the McDonald's, or if you're familiar with the McDonald's, it's, it's a fairly similar lineal foot. So, you know, so, so to answer your questions, we think 12 cars, measured at 20 feet per car, can, can, you know, can stay safely on the site before backing out on.
You could get, okay.
I just did the math, it's 13 cars if you figure at 19 feet.
It's 13, okay. So it depends whether it's a 350 with an eight-foot bed or a Volkswagen with.
Precise.
You're saying 920, and he's saying 90, you're gonna get at least a dozen in there.
Yes, we think so.
Okay. Okay, does that help you at all?
Well, it helps answer that question, but it still doesn't alleviate my feeling that I'm not an engineer. And yeah, I look at the, and I go, oh, that car drive-through looks really nice. To me, I'll say yes. But an engineer is gonna look at it completely differently than I'm going to, and I feel like we should have some kind of review independently of the town and look at all. You know, we're putting a lot of money on the highway in addition, and I think that just throwing a.
It's a fair comment. It's a fair comment, and, and let me look across the room. Phil, just by, yeah, no, no, you can't, there's no easel, you can't hide behind it anymore. So do you feel if we sent this plan to you, you could look at it and enlighten us at all? Do you think there's anything you could bring to the table by looking over what you've got here? I don't want to send something out to you and have you say, what do you want from me? And on the other hand, I don't want to not.
Sure. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, we're happy to review anything you would like. So as I sit and listen to the concern, we would review the drive-through, we would give you an opinion from an engineering perspective to aid you in your decision. I, I haven't reviewed this particular site plan, so I don't have an opinion as I sit in the back of the room today for you, otherwise I would offer it.
Okay.
And then, and my other concern as well, not done.
You feel as though you could, you'd, you feel fully competent that you could look at whatever we've, we're seeing and, and make some comment?
I, I do, I do, and we're not looking to make, our, our role is not to make any application more onerous for counsel to report back to their applicant. We would just review it for your concerns. We'd review it for general adherence to any applicable bylaws.
That's what I'm.
Any flags that haven't been discussed by the attorney or here tonight or by the building commissioner, just to make sure we put our eyes on it without being exhaustively detailed on it.
Okay. And, and specifically, if that, if we vote to do that, you could look at 12 cars and you'd have some book or some place or some reference you could go to and give us guidance as to how many, how many pizzas they could stick through the window and if they had 12 cars in line and.
We, we can. There's empirical data that we can weigh on this application. The, the challenge with some of that empirical data is it is very heavily weighted towards McDonald's and Wendy's, the real heavy drive-through users. I'm not familiar with the pizza group that is looking to move in here, whether they're as high density as McDonald's, so they might be unfairly judged, but, you know, we can give some opinions to it.
All right.
Sure.
All right, that said, anybody else on Zoom that wants to make any comments?
Yeah, you can have that. Mr. Kaufman, the principal's here, his Jonathan Kaufman.
There you go, I see some, I see a yellow hand. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, good evening, thank you so much, Jonathan Kaufman, Wareham Cranberry Highway LLC applicant, just, you know, more than happy to, you know, have everyone look at this and make sure everything functions properly, I just do want to, you know, reiterate that this is a, an existing restaurant, you know, the site has, is basically, we're not looking to change any impervious or expand the site in any way, shape, or form, you know, really, we just want to make it clear that, you know, the drive-through is critical to having a tenant, and, you know, we're excited about, you know, the possibilities for this site, and, you know, do feel that the drive-through is, is critical to the success of the, of the location.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, that's on Zoom, what about in the room? Anybody in the room? If we keep talking about pizza, maybe we'll get everybody hungry, you know?
I did, I would like to say for the record, I think I said it before, but we don't believe, though, it, it should go through site plan review, I'm not familiar with how we can authorize, you know, the town engineer to review something because then we have to go through the fifty-three G process, I'm not sure how you guys are going to handle that, because there's currently no bylaw that requires my client to have a peer review.
And it's going to be-
I want to appease you, I understand everything, but, but what is the standard that we have in our bylaw, so we'd have to take a look at that to see if there is applicability for, you know, setting up an account, having him authorized to review everything if it's not going to be full site plan review, so.
So if we're going to impose this, then he's going to have, then the applicant's going to have to do a fifty-three G account, and like, we're being told, I'm not sure if we can-
Right, as far as the legal standing, I mean, maybe you want to talk to counsel, your legal counsel about that?
Let me, let me, through you, and let me ask, and if you want to say no, we're not answering that now, that's okay, but through you to your client, do you think they'd be willing to pay for the review? Because that's what it boils down to.
Which review?
Somebody's going to pay, could hear or-
The site plan review?
Yeah, well-
Yeah, I think it's-
Are you looking for a full site plan review, is that what you think you need?
I think-
To be comfortable to vote?
Well, it needs to be reviewed, so whatever we want to call that, it needs to be reviewed, I feel, with our bylaws, and, you know, everything that this impacts, putting a drive-through on this restaurant, I'm not qualified to say, yeah, that's a, it's a go, and the other thing is, that we need to keep in mind, is that it's a variance, and that's, you know, if we're talking about what's the law, I mean-
It's a use variance, so it's a, you know, as far as the use-
Well, it's a variance for the drive-through in a, right, in the CS district, which is not allowed, so, you know, based on that, we can request a site review in order to approve that. There's a lot of improvements in town, a lot of restaurants are going in, they look beautiful, we're, I feel like we're requiring a lot of boxes to be checked by, by people that are coming before the, you know, the board or just in town to develop, and in keeping with trying to improve Wareham, I think that we should be looking at things like this, it's a restaurant that's going to, that's looking to have a drive-through, so I do feel it needs to be reviewed.
So you feel that you'd like to request a fifty-three G account be set up, and it be turned over to the town, the town engineer for peer review? Is that what you- Is that a motion you'd like to make?
I think the zoning bylaws say that we have a right to authorize those changes, right, in our bylaws, as a voting board.
Authorize the changes?
Yeah, you have to come-
Yeah, no, we're not required to send anything off a peer review.
So we can-
So, but I don't know if we have-
Let me, let me just, I'm not against the peer review, like an initial, I just don't know, it's either a full site plan, or, I mean, I know Mr. Rowley used to do kind of a review for you guys, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure we have a board that'll support the request to have a fifty-three G account, because I haven't even heard the motion yet.
Yeah.
So we, we sit here and-
To your prior, do I want to make a motion for that? Yes, so moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Debonese, that we have, that we refer this to site plan review, or refer this to the town engineer for review, if we don't want to call it a site plan review. Do I have a second? If it, if I don't get a second, how can we move on it? We can't. If it fails to be seconded and it fails to be voted on, I'd rather vote rather than just sit here and be silent, I'll second it. All in favor of sending this out for peer review, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, no.
And aye.
The board's not requesting a review based on that vote. If the, if the applicant wants to voluntarily offer one, you're-
Yeah, I think that we're, I know the clients, we've discussed that, we understand this site, and I've talked about other sites on Cranberry Highway, that you've, you've had full site plan reviews, landscaping, I understand that, we certainly can continue and perhaps get you maybe some landscaping around the edge, some, maybe some more things that will make you feel comfortable with it, signage, enter here, exit only, and I'm not, again, I'm just not sure the legalese of, in the bylaws that allows a review that's not site plan review. If I can, I have another time, we will, or we could ask the town planner. So if it was just like a NISSA review, I think we'd be fine with that.
Just a review, a peer review by our town engineer, and, and I, I guess, since the board has failed to force it, what I'm hoping is that maybe the applicant will volunteer it to, because here's my concern, we have a four-person board, and we can't get bigger than a four-person board, and you need four yeses.
Yeah.
So if we have one person that appears to be opposed, I don't want this to fail just because somebody doesn't feel competent, I'd rather, you know, I'd rather, so if the applicant could say, yeah, sure, three bucks an hour, let them have ten hours, you know, that, I don't know what the cost is, I don't, you know, so I'd like to continue and have you guys come back to us, and if in the meantime, the applicant-
Yeah, speaks to Allen Major-
Has volunteered some kind of a review, and it gets paid for through a fifty-three somehow miraculously through our wonderful planning board, I mean, planning department pro over there in the corner, if you guys can all make it happen before we come back in two weeks, terrific.
Yeah, so we need it till November eighth anyways.
November eighth.
Number one, too, I'd want to talk to town council to see, like, this process-
You just want to-
Make you guys be protected, too, because I'm-
Yep.
I don't see that it's in here something that is necessarily we can do, but if we can do it, we're going to do it, so.
I understand your position a hundred percent, so, everybody knows where we kind of left this off, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue till November eighth, was it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Is it that, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Veronica and seconded by Richard, please excuse my informality, but we all know everybody else's first names. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, so we're continued to November?
Excellent.
Thank you, I hope you guys can put our member, you know, get us some information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have these back? You want to keep that one, too?
No.
I'm going to throw out his own amount, so.
Okay, might as well while you're up, this is it, this is it. No, just, yep, we're good. I haven't opened up the next one yet, sorry, Richard. I want a chance to get up and walk around, too. Let me write down continued. The last one was, this one was continued November eighth, the one before was continued to October twenty-five.
November eighth, both November eighth.
Both November eighth. Cool, cool, so we got, looks like Wareham Fire District coming up thirty-nine, twenty-three, oh, wait a minute, nope, forty, twenty-three. Anybody here from the Fire District? Okay, I'm going to read this in because it's a brand-new one, but come on up and get comfortable while I read. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero two five seven one, to consider petition number forty dash twenty-three, for a variance from the requirements of Article eleven, Section eleven sixty, and eleven sixty-two, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Wareham Fire District of two five five zero Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., seeking to add a two-sided digital message display sign at twenty-five fifty Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Assessors Map one oh nine, as lots A one, it says A one, A one, it must be A one and A two, but it says A one slash A one.
I think it is actually A one, A one.
A one, A one, but it's two different lots, both named A one.
Yep.
That's all right, this is my brother, my brother Harry and my-
Other brother Harry and my other brother Harry, or whatever that was, that was- Inset within-
And they are A one, A one, okay.
Yeah.
And that's in the CG zoning district.
Correct.
And let me have these, my, this, one, two, there you go, sir. And you were before us before for something very similar, but you wanted to put the sign on Main Street, and, and there were members that expressed concern about having that type of sign on Main Street, and was suggesting that you might be more favorably looked upon out on Cranberry Highway over where the Water Department is, and that's where we are.
Even without a vote ever occurring on the previous site.
Yeah, there was no vote on there, no, you guys withdrew.
It wasn't needed.
You ran scared. We didn't want to scare you.
Read the room, pretty much.
Yeah, well, you read the room, there you go, there you go, we're not stacking any decks, but we sure can read the room.
We got lots of room to stack, Charlie.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, go ahead, tell us what you're up to.
So it is exactly the same messaging board as previously proposed for downtown, it's just at a new location, which is the Water Department office that we already own, right on Cranberry Highway, which, yes, is still Cranberry Highway. Oh, I'm sorry.
Speak into the microphone, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start over again, I am proposing the same electronic messaging two-sided board as previously proposed at another previous meeting for the location downtown at the fire station, now propose for the Wareham Fire District Water Department office location at twenty-five fifty Cranberry Highway. The size of the sign, the make of the sign, everything is exactly the same, it's the same sign that we've already ordered, so there was no, no change other than the location.
So this location would have, by, our bylaw would have allowed you to double the size of the sign, and you guys just said, nope, we're, we're happy with the size-
Okay, you'd already ordered.
Well, well- I know, you already ordered.
A couple things, we'd already ordered it, I have a warrant article to purchase a certain amount, that amount is already there.
You painted yourself, okay, okay.
And I still think the sign is big enough.
You think it works for me? My, my very first comment on this, just for the, for a general comment, is that these kind of signs are becoming more and more prevalent, and maybe we ought to think about some wording in our bylaws that address this exact type of sign, but that's a side note. Any comments from the board members on this? No? Commissioner, anybody in the room that wants to make any comments? We're pretty familiar with what you want to do, and there's really no reason to, you know, we could put on a good show and make it look, but, you know, we-
You're not going to ask me to answer?
We already know, you know, we've been down this route.
Yeah, and honestly, this was the original location that we're, I'm now back to-
So you started here, then you went to Main Street, now you're back here, and, okay. Good. So, rather than wax redundant on it, I, I would be more than willing to entertain a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Veronica, seconded by Richard. All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye, okay, the public portion of this is closed, there'll be no more discussion unless the board wants to talk amongst themselves. If not, then we need a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Troy?
Second.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Thank you very much.
Was that too hard, or?
That was a lot easier than the last time. And, and totally, I totally agree that it's the more proper location.
Thank you.
So I actually appreciate the-
No, no.
The process.
So now we feel if we call the Fire Department, they're going to come?
Well, I can't speak for the Fire Department, because that's a different department that I have-
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
You'll allow them to use the water to extinguish the fire.
They, they always want to use the water.
They're not going to get our water shut off, are they? Thank you, thank you for working with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think we're down to one more. Approve. Four, zero, zero. Okay, here you go, here's a couple, here's one for you, sir.
Thank you.
And. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., oh two five seven one, to consider petition number forty-one twenty-three, for a special permit and a variance from the requirements of Article six, Section six thirteen, and six twenty-one, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Dorothy Piper of forty Chipewar Drive, Buzzard's Bay, Mass., seeking to install a studio apartment on second floor of a garage located at four Nanamette Street, accessory structure to the dwelling located at five Cameron Street, Wareham, Mass., disappears on Assessors Map three B, lots four eight and four nine, in the MR thirty zoning district. State your name and tell us what you're up to.
Dorothy Piper, I'm looking to put a studio apartment over an existing garage.
Okay. And. Why are we here tonight? Is it not in allowed use? Is it in allowed use? What do we got here? I see a Gambro, picture of a Gambro-roofed garage.
You're almost there.
Correct.
Keep going, you can get to the denial.
Okay. Ah, here we go, so how come we can't do it? One principal residential building per lot, okay, so it'd be two separate buildings in all districts, no more than one principal residential building. Minimum lot area, square feet, two-family dwelling, forty-five thousand square feet, how many thousand, how many square feet did you get on that lot?
With both lots?
Your existing, yeah, your what?
I believe it's nine thousand.
Nine thou, you have, you have nine thousand. And you need forty-five thousand, so you need a variance for, nine from forty-five is thirty-four thousand, thirty-six thousand square, thirty-six thousand square feet. Variance. Ooh. Okay. And then the third thing, minimum frontage feet, two-family dwelling, 200 feet, how much frontage do you have there?
Well, in front of the garage, my site plan says 220.18.
So you're, you're, you're looking at the zoning map or the?
I'm looking at the site plan that I had done.
You're looking at your site plan and you believe you have how much frontage?
220.18 feet on Nannymett, um, yes, on Nannymett Street.
20.1? Point one, one tenth of a foot. 220 feet and an inch and a quarter. There, more or less.
More or less.
More or less, okay. And minimum frontage for a two-family dwelling is 200, so maybe, looking over at you, did you see it differently, or? Don't have the plan in front of you? Okay, so. We're gonna, and therefore a special permit and a variance, a special permit and a variance. Accessory strictors having a residential issue, so. Okay, so you got two things against you. Um, you, you're way short on the lot size, grossly short on the lot, lot size, and, and you're in a zone that would allow you to have a two-family if you had that extra 36,000 square feet by right, but it would have to be attached, it couldn't be detached, cuz our zoning says, in the zone you're in, one principal dwelling, and this would be creating two principal.
Well, they're two separate lots, so I would only be short, would I only be short?
Um, you might have heard us talk about this earlier this evening, you might have been snoozing back there.
No, I heard you talk about it, cuz I said this is my exact scenario.
Okay, it's, and it's confusing as, um, you know, but doesn't matter what the town sends you as how many lots it is. When you own, if you, if, if the zoning calls for 30, for 45,000 square feet and you own two 4,500 square foot lots under the same name, they're really just one lot. You got one lot. Yeah, the town's sending you two tax bills, cuz the town doesn't have some person on the payroll that goes around and redraws lots and eliminates them and goes up to the registry, they, um, they would make you go hire an engineer and do that and pay for it all and pay for the recording, you know? So until somebody pays for it, comes out as two separate tax bills, but you got one.
Okay.
So, um, you know, it's, I just, I just, let's get that right off the table, you don't have two lots. You have two lots, but they're one.
Okay.
You know, they're Siamese twins. Joined at the lot line. Okay, so. I, I gotta, um. I gotta say that some people would have hired an attorney to come in here and present this to us and give us some kind of a legal argument why we should say yes.
I'm not changing the shape of the structure.
I know you're not.
I'm just trying to make a studio apartment to.
You're just making it less conforming.
Yes.
So.
I'm trying to get someone, I'm trying to get a studio apartment to help.
I get it, I get it, but here's the problem, we've had people come in front of us and, um, it's well-known, not just in Wareham, but, you know, in the planet Earth and, and more specifically in the United States of America and more specifically in Massachusetts and locally in Wareham, it's well-known that there's a housing shortage, there's people with no place to live. So people come in here and say, hey, people need a place to live, they can live up above my garage. But our town has bylaws that say, nope, they can't. So, because they wanna make this part of town is for industrial and this part of town is for single-family homes, this part of town is for two-family homes or multifamilies and this is, this strip here is for commercial and, and where you live, it's for sing, you know, if you wanna have a two-family home connected, not two separate buildings, you need an acre and a half, an acre plus of land. You've got less than a quarter acre, you know? So you got a, um, a real problem that we'd have to, we'd have to have a real compelling argument to tell us that, to give us a reason. I mean, I'll, I'll look to the board to maybe tell me something different, but I gotta tell you, we've had a lot of people come in front of us and say, well, because there's a housing shortage and I'm trying to provide a house for somebody, and I sit here.
I'm trying to provide.
Yeah.
Someone to take care of my mother that lives in the front house.
Okay, so.
And to help give her, honestly, to help her a little bit of income on social security.
That's a better argument.
Yeah, that's, that's my.
If the house in the garage were connected, you could maybe get an accessory apartment or an in-law apartment or. So. Rather than us be really harsh with you, I'd really, I'm gonna let the board chip, chirp in here, but I'd really like to see us continue tonight, suggest you get some advice, cuz maybe by connecting your garage to your house and coming back and asking us for something different, we might have a way to say yes.
Okay.
What I see in front of me right now, I think you're gonna have a hard time getting four people to say, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah?
Um, so rather than say no, you know, and stick my tongue out at you. I'd, I'd rather have you, you know, have that opportunity, but, um, before we even do that, anybody from the board, do you have any comments?
You pretty much summed it up.
Summed it up, all right. I'd like to open it up to the public, because there's other people sitting in the room and maybe you got neighbors that are here.
I do.
Saying, I hate her and I don't want her to have it. Maybe you got neighbors sitting here and saying, she's a lovely lady and I know her mother, and if there's any way you guys can help her, all this stuff matters, so it's nice, you know, so is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter, either for or against at this time?
We have her neighbor, we have the law.
Come on, you gotta come up, you gotta sit, you gotta get a microphone, make it live, state your name. If you both wanna talk, you state your name and, and who, you know, and, and then when you get finished, then that's two people spoke. Or you can say, I'm speaking for my wife and she can move her lips.
I think she should speak for her.
She wants to go first?
I can't do, I mean, I can't speak for her, that might get me in trouble later on. Um, I am.
Okay.
Next-door neighbor and.
And you, your name?
Megan, Jacob Krezak.
Okay, Jacob, so go ahead.
They're great neighbors, we 100% approve if they wanna do it, I don't have any issues of why they.
No objections?
No.
No objections. And, and anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
For what they wanna do and the reason why they wanna do it.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's very viable and I think it should be allowed, but, um, that's, it, it, it's a good, good reason why they are doing it or wanting to do it, to have someone go in there and take care of their mother, who is, uh, even though she runs around like a chicken with a head cut off, cuz she's very, very nice, but she runs around and she's looking like she's very good, but it would be very nice, I do think, as having parents also myself and eventually one day this would might happen to me, I do think it'd be good if they could put somebody that is very close in proximity to, uh.
I, I share your sentiment, I really do, I'm, I'm a big believer in, good night, Bob, good night, John Boy, good night, you know, their lights went off one at a time and, you know, I mean, in, in our history in this country, people always had a purpose, you know, grandparents took care of things and stayed, you know, so I'm all for that family type thing, so thank you for your comments. Um, and, and along that line, I've had, um, the opportunity to see things get granted to different properties with a condition that upon this person's passing, that variance would expire. I'm just saying that out loud for, um, some other people in the room that might benefit from hearing it when they go seek professional advice. And anybody else that would like to speak?
I'm Megan Tower, I'm at 6 Nannymett Street.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, it is.
Is it green?
It is.
Okay, yeah, they got you, okay.
Megan Tower at 6 Nannymett Street and a neighbor, and I also support the variance by our neighbors, um, same reasons that my husband has stated, that, you know, it's an, an aging parent that you're concerned about and, um, having someone close by to keep an eye on them is great. I mean, Jake does a really good job, when he's out leaf blowing, he chucks on her and blows her leaves for her, but having someone else there would be great.
Who blows the leaves? The neighbor, you're putting your leaves in their yard and, and they're putting, and they're putting.
We don't even have trees in our yard, they're our neighbor's leaves.
Oh.
That come to our yards.
I know that, I know how that works, I know how that works. I got my neighbors to plant trees in their yard, so I get the shade, but I get the leaves too. Uh, it's okay, you know, and you know what I do? I let the wind blow them all under my shrubs and I don't buy any mulch. So anyway, um, thank you, anybody else here from the public, anybody on Zoom, anybody that wants to speak? I'd really like to hear a motion to continue before we make a decision on this.
So moved.
I got a motion by Richard that we continue this and bring you back on October 25th, if you are available.
Yep.
And is it seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. You've been continued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you come back with different information, we'd love to look at it.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else on that one, continued, let me. Okay, wanna, um, it says any other business, it says draft rules, before we go to draft rules, just before the microphones were turned on tonight, I was talking with Richard and, um, it seems that we have been working with, we and other boards, or I'm not, I can't speak for other boards or other departments or anything, but, um, we've been working with this set of zoning, this zoning map that was created on August 14, 2017. I got it off the town website, printed it out for everybody's convenience, we all have a copy of it, and now I find out on page eight of our bylaws, of course, there's a new copy now, it may not be page eight, section 221, it says we're supposed to be using a zoning map dated May 14, 2007. So to the best of my knowledge, either these 2017 maps were never approved, or.
Is there one missing?
The 2017 map, our, our page eight was never updated to say 2017, and I don't know which it is.
Or they missed a one.
Pardon me?
Or they missed a one in front of the seven?
Oh, they missed a one in front, but it's, no, because there, there is a map dated May 14.
Oh, okay.
And, and this is August and May, so it'd be more than just a, a digit. So there's definitely either a scriveness error or somehow this appeared on the Wareham Town Website and somebody went, oops, that never got approved, because it's disappeared, I've been looking for it for the last two days, and I'm harder to find now, before it was everywhere. Ken online, I get, Ken wants to try to, um, explain this?
Yeah, the 2014, uh, 2017 map was, had errors in it and was never approved. It was briefly online and picked up, but the 2007 map is the one that the zoning bylaw has consistently said is the correct map. What we'll do is we'll have an addendum to that 2007 map, that will have a, a list of zone, uh, district changes that have occurred, there've been three that have occurred since that map is made.
So, are you saying that there's, that the 2007 map isn't correct either?
No, it, it, it doesn't have all the information on it, that's correct.
It, it doesn't have all the information on it, but it's correct?
Yes. That sounds above today's world.
It's incomplete information, but it's a correct, it's, it's.
It's the one you should be using.
Which one, we should be using 07.
That's right, double 07.
And this 17, we should just throw it away, cuz it's, it's grossly wrong, but 07 isn't as wrong.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanna be clear, because the shit's gonna hit the fan and people don't like it when I use words like shit, because it's not professional, but everybody knows what it is. It's, it's shit. And the shit's gonna hit the fan, somebody's gonna come in here and say, I was approved on a project by a 2017 August 14 map and a board here worked under that map and it was posted on the town website, and now we're getting referred back to a map that's dated May 14, 2007, and right now on the record tonight, I've heard that that map's no good either. So, here we are, running this board, making decisions, and it's shit. That's my piece, I just wanted it on the record. I, I think certain things belong on the record, and that's one of them. Going on from there, it says here, draft rules and regulations for site plan reviews, site set public hearing date. Do we have a set of, um, draft rules and regulations to go over?
No, you haven't, I haven't been able to send those out yet, so we, we'll postpone that one to the next meeting.
Okay, so we need to, we could put that.
I feel that would be better anyway, we'd have a full board then.
October 25th. Can we put, can we have it on the agenda for October 25th as a, an agenda item that we'll go over a draft set of rules and regulations? Is that?
Yes.
That putting the department, uh, people in the department under any kind of pressure?
Uh, it puts a little pressure on, but that's good pressure, we'll get it done.
Who's getting the pressure? Who am I putting pressure on?
Somebody that can take it.
Anybody that can take it? Okay, it's a steam kettle, but we won't let it blow. So we're officially throwing this 2017 map away, we're looking for a 2007 map that we know isn't much better, but we can follow it, because the book says we can follow it, and we're well aware that we have a problem with our zoning maps on the record. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, you beeped me to it.
He's, he's got the motion, he's got the second, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye, we're closed. Thank you all.